Hello. Hi. So is this working? Everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm getting thumbs up from the crew. Yeah, okay. Hi. What a great crowd. Okay, so I'm Alex Bell. I am the Coordinator of the Student Health Center. And I'm going to attempt to be your moderator and put some organization, apparently, to our impromptu town hall. I appreciate everyone that's here. What we're going to try to do today is address any questions or concerns you may have in regards to the news that we've been hearing, you know, about the Oregon shooting and other campus tragedies that have occurred. We want you all to have this space to ask any question, how you're feeling about it, what you may be concerned about here on this campus. So I'm going to introduce our panel, our WISE panel here. Deborah here. Deborah Redding Stewart is one of our Mental Health Counselors at Student Health Services. She will be presenting first, a little bit about mental health first aid and addressing some of your feelings and concerns. And then we have John Stogard, here, our Chief of Police, who will tell you a little bit about what we have in place on campus. And then myself, I will finish up with telling you about our Threat Assessment Team that we have in place and showing you how that works. Throughout, we will have questions. So if you have a question, you must go to the podium in the back there. Please say your name so it can be entered, right? Say your name.
That's for Lompoc. That's for Lompoc.
That's for Lompoc, okay. I'm getting mixed signals. Okay, you don't have to say your name. You will also not be on the camera when you're at the podium, so you can ask your question and we will attempt to address it. Lompoc, hello, Lompoc. Where is the camera? Hello, Lompoc. They are out there. If you have a question, please type it into the chat area in YouTube with your name. Okay, did I get all the instructions? Okay, great. All right, so we're going to begin. Deborah, come on up. I'm going to leave, the mic is off.
Okay. Okay. (inaudible)
I'm going to talk a little bit about trauma and mental health first aid. I think, first of all, trauma, we all experience trauma at some point in our lives, and various things can trigger a trauma response. So, when you're in a classroom, for example, can you think of anything that might trigger a trauma response in someone? Anything that might happen in class?
I could see where perhaps if you're doing some sort of role-playing with another student that brings up some emotional issues such as, you know, if you have an assignment in your class where one person is playing an angry patient.
Right, right. A situation where there's some role-playing and someone's portraying an angry patient might bring up trauma for someone. And someone in the back?
Yeah, just go to the podium. Yeah, thank you.
Perhaps a, like a fire bell, like a fire alarm?
A fire alarm, exactly. So a loud sound, a loud sound of any sort might trigger trauma in someone. And there was someone else.
I thought a video clip or a movie or something the instructor was using to do a point, but they had no idea.
Right, exactly. There might be something in that video clip that triggers the trauma. Anyone else? Any other ideas?
Maybe, can I butt in here maybe for concern of time? That whoever makes a response to that, maybe myself or you can just repeat what they say instead of having to come back here. That might help, just an idea.
Okay. Well, I have a list of some other things. A sense of being ignored, aggressive behavior in another person in the classroom, angry facial expressions, completing forms, even taking exams, maybe some disorder or chaos, impatient authorities, long waits for service. All of these things can trigger trauma and many others depends on what the trauma was. Behavioral responses that you might see from someone whose trauma has been triggered include, what would you say? What response might you see from someone whose trauma has been triggered? Yes?
Agitated.
Agitated, exactly. What else might you see? Anyone?
Panic.
Panic, yes. Argumentativeness, crying, restlessness, spaced-out, startled response, stiffness, uncooperative, unresponsive. So you might see any of those. And so if that happens, we have some information on mental health first aid. The first thing you want to do if the student doesn't know you would be to introduce yourself if you're offering aid to someone. You want to ask about their immediate needs. You always want to talk to them with respect and dignity. You want to be accepting, genuine, empathic. Always ask permission before touching someone. So you might ask permission, is it okay if I touch you on the back? Is it okay if I sit next to you? Just doing those things might increase the trauma for that individual, and I have seen that happen. If you sit next to them, you want to remain at or below their level. You don't want to be standing over them. Sit beside if possible. Maintain an open stance and posture. Maintain comfortable eye contact and modulate nonverbal cues. You want to gather information from them. So listen non-judgmentally, ask caring questions, seek clarification, restate and summarize facts and feelings, modulate your tone of voice, be patient, try to avoid interrupting, confronting, or blaming. Provide some emotional support for them. Keep yourself calm, keep others calm, provide hope for assistance. If you're concerned about suicide, ask. Don't be afraid to ask someone. In most cases, they will appreciate that you have asked. They will feel that finally someone has asked, someone cares. You can just ask, are you having thoughts of suicide? Are you thinking about killing yourself? So you can ask it directly. Next would be to obtain assistance, so call Campus Police or bring the student to Student Health Services. And we are behind the yellow door, Building W, Room 12. Provide referrals. We have brought some information on referrals with us, it's on the back table. We've also brought information on helplines for suicide and other resources in the community. So provide referrals to Student Health Services, Campus Police, and Community Resources. And finally, we want to always be taking care of ourselves because many of us, as I have said, have experienced trauma. So you have to take care of yourself so that you don't re-experience trauma and that you are able to help others. So, simple things like (inaudible) breathe, spend time outdoors, stretch, mindfulness and meditation, healthy meals, and decrease your stress. And I've brought some more information that's, again, on the table in the back regarding self-care. So, does anyone have any questions on that? Okay.
All right, thank you, Deborah. So I want to take a few minutes in between our speakers if anyone has a question for any of our speakers at any time, if they have anything right now. Does Lompoc have any questions? We also have a health center in Lompoc. We mentioned the yellow door. We have a health center in Lompoc in Building 1, Room 109. Okay, so if there's no questions right now, then I will introduce John to come up. Also, Deborah mentioned that we do have a table full of resources right at the back. There's also a sign-in sheet for faculty and staff if you're here and want professional development, if you could sign in. And how do I make this presentation go away? (inaudible) that. And then we do that, and that, okay.
Hi there, I'm John. I'm the interim Police Chief for Hancock College. I'm just going to briefly go over a few things that we're doing here. Mainly, we want you guys to ask questions, so after I briefly go through what I need to do and the rest of the panel, we'll open it up. But some of the things we're doing here at Hancock to keep you safe, as plain as it might be, is the emergency procedure flip chart. Each room is supposed to have one of these. It's best to read this prior to an incident. You definitely don't want to pop it open when it's happened. What do I do? As you see in this room, it's in the back corner over there. Every classroom is supposed to have one. Active shooters, the very last slip here. It also, what's nice about this is it gives you our phone numbers to our police department where we're located. Does anybody know what our emergency extension is here at Hancock College? Marco?
(inaudible).
Here, it's 3911 and LVC. Anybody know the LVC one?
(inaudible).
Denise, 5911. We have police dispatchers, two of them, that are on until 6:30 at night. After that, it goes to the City Police Department. But during the day, if you push from any house phone, so every classroom is supposed to have a house phone, go to a 3911 for emergency. If you do have cell phones, just understand cell phones go through the Highway Patrol first, and you have to tell them where you're at, then they'll patch you through to the San Maria Police Department, then they'll patch you through to us. So if you could remember our extension, 3911 here and 5911 at LVC, the response would be a lot quicker. If you're on a house phone, cell phone, you know 911. Every house phone here, you could also dial 911. If you can't remember it, 911 will be fine also, but again, that goes to the Highway Patrol, to the City Police Department. Then that's 3911, goes straight to our dispatcher on duty. So if you get a chance, read the threat. Another thing is, how many sign up for Rave here? It used to be called Alert U, and now it's called Rave. And you sign up, you have? Can you explain what that is real quick?
(inaudible).
Right. So not only does it, if you sign up for it, not only does it go to your cell phone, but it'll go to your desktop if you're sitting at a computer and has your email address. It'll pop up on your desktop while you're on the computer doing it, spells out emergency. And then underneath that, it'll tell you what's happening. But, yes?
John, could you show us on my handbook how to do that?
I cannot. When I signed up for it, I went on to the Staff Members area and it automatically pops up, first thing. Is it pops up with, "Sign up here for Rave." I'm not sure with the student, how the students access that. It's probably hankoccollege.edu. But for staff members, it popped up for me and I signed on to it. Has anyone? Is that how you sign up for it?
(inaudible). It pops up for you.
Nice. And I recommend that you sign up for it. It will let you know what's happening. Our dispatchers type the message and also the Public Information, Public Affairs Department here types into that, and it gives you a good idea of what's happening. It might not just be for active shooter, it could be for fire, but at least you guys will know what's happening and where to go, okay? On real time. Every classroom has a phone now, should have a phone. Every room should have a phone, and we have speakers on there now. So if we have an active shooter, same message that we're typing to your cell phone will go up over the phone system too. So if you're sitting at your desk or your classroom, it's going to tell you what's happening, what to do. Our blue phones out in the parking lots and some on campus have speakers too. That would be, same message goes over that too. So if you're walking by the library through the blue phone there, it's going to tell you what's happening. So obviously, if they say you have an active shooter here and cafeteria is going to give you an idea, okay, I'm at the theater right now. I could high-tail it out here. Maintenance is working on a locking system here that's already in the works. We've been given $400,000 to secure all the doors here. So maintenance is going around and providing locks on every door, every classroom door. So if there is an active shooter, you're able to lock yourself in. And there'll be a key on the outside, so if we have to get in, we could still get in with our key. Not every door has that yet. They're in the process, little by little, doing that. Pretty soon, our dispatchers are going to have the capability in our office to lock down certain rooms too by pushing the button. So, every door on campus will eventually, I could push a button in my office and lock the cafeteria down. I could lock C building, I could lock the theater down. That's coming also. Just police staffing, real quick. I do have two police officers on, pretty much at any time of the day, walking around, some uniform, some plain clothes. Sometimes you won't always know that we're there. We also have unarmed security officers that are on duty all day too, that are my eyes and ears. I also want to throw out there real quick is we're just, I don't know if you read in the paper, we're just notified that we're the seventh safest campus in the United States. Anybody know how many? Thank you. Knock on wood, of course, you know, unfortunately. And I thought it was just in California, but it's all in the United States. Does anybody know how many colleges there are in the United States total? Yeah, thousands. And we're the safest campus. I will say violent crime here is zero, so I want to keep it that way. Okay. That's all I have with what we're working on right now. We'll take questions later. Okay, Kathy? Go get it, Kathy!
In that, the instructions that you have hanging up in the wall, at one point, there was a green and a red card in the back.
Right.
Do they still have those?
You know, things are changing every year, and every training, we, police officers, we train about twice a year an active shooter of local police departments and the fire department, and they suggested we take that out.
Right.
Yes, very confusing sometimes. So the green card was, you'd flip it under your door in the classroom saying, "Everybody's okay." And we'd move on to the next class. Green card, okay, everything's okay. Red card mean danger. But, you know, the active shooter could easily do that too, throw the green card under the door. All they'd have to do is read the instruction, "Oh, green card, under the door, great."
Or I had heard that that would indicate that there's a group of people in the room.
Right.
It could be kind of a work against you. Okay, thank you.
So that's no longer there, and if they are, we can just throw them away if you see. Jeff?
I cut in line, I just.
Oh, Denise Beech, you too?
I just wanted to know, we have a lot of part-time faculty, especially out in Lompoc and in Building 5, and a lot of our part-time faculty do not have keys to the classroom.
Right.
So is there a procedure where, you know, how do they lock the door if they don't have keys and we don't have these locks?
Yeah, we just had a meeting on that, so good question. So yes, part-time faculty could apply for keys now. So everybody could have a key if you apply for it, put in the request for a key. It's the same one that the key's on and the alarm codes are on, and just have their dean sign that.
And Campus Police are paying for that?
No, we'll send that to the Maintenance Department, yeah. That's part of the $400,000.
Oh, it is, okay.
That we have for that.
Okay.
So yeah, we just talked about that. Maintenance does not have any problems with issuing part-time faculty's keys, no, just because of that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, for example, if there's a shooter at the gymnasium.
Yes.
How will each individual class know that there is a shooter at the gymnasium? Is it a mass call?
Yes, when we put out the text message, everybody gets it at the same time. You in the gymnasium probably hear it, gunshots will echo and it'll be very loud. You won't have earmuffs on like we do in training, and you're going to hear it. Did you have another question to that, or? Okay.
When we have two, at least two spaces on campus with high occupancy, so the athletic fields and the theater, is there any plans for training of staff in that area to lockdown? And if so, when does that happen?
Yes, there is plans for that. There's no concrete date yet, but every meeting I sit in, we always bring that up, that the administrators are always being taught what to do, but now we have to put that to staff in general and even the students.
Because we at PCPA, we have, you know, 16 rotated, 16 volunteers for every show if it's a full house, and those volunteers rotate through, they may be on one show or two shows, three shows a year.
Yes.
So training those as well, it's not just staff?
Right. And I've also been going around to departments that I ask and give them one-on-one training, so they could always email me too, and I'll come do one-on-one training two or three separate times if you need me.
Okay.
I know you do have a lot of staff, so it'd be hard to do it all at once, but just email me with dates and times and I'll be there.
I have a couple of questions, actually. One as a part of the leadership class and one slightly more personal for students. The first one is, let me bring it up real quick. So, could you possibly explain the exact job of a police officer and your job as the chief and how that differs?
Well, our main goal, whether it's a police officer or myself, is keeping all of you safe, faculty, staff, and students. That's our number one goal. And it's hard for me to sit at my desk because I get antsy and I feel like I'm not doing that job, so I'll get out, I'll walk around and check in everywhere. But we have the same job, and that's to keep you safe. That's the number one priority. I know a lot of you think, "Oh, we're writing parking tickets" or something like that. That's so far out there. Our main job is to protect you as a student, staff, and faculty.
What about the second part of that question where, what differs between you, you know, as the chief versus a regular police officer? Like, what specifically are your jobs within that? Like, compared to a normal police officer?
It's all the same. We're state-certified California Peace Officers, as in Peace Officer in the State of California, we're all trained under the same umbrella. Me as a chief, I'm more of an administrator, so I have to push a lot of paper unfortunately every day, where the police officer's out on patrol handling the calls for service.
All right, thank you. And the second question is, a few other people, including myself, have, by the campus here as police officers, have been, either have signed or have been pressured and have not signed, or have been forced to sign a admission of guilt to not be in specific rooms. Can you, can you look into that, any chance?
Yeah, I don't know anything about that.
All right, right ahead. I've got, you want?
Hi, John. Diana Perez. I know we, I see that we have a lot of students here today, and my question for you is, when you hear about these stories about active shooters in various locations across our country, it seems to me that there's somebody sometimes that knows something. Either they know somebody who's made some threats, or they saw it on Facebook. So my question to you is because I think that sometimes people are afraid to come forward and say anything when they know something. So if I, let's, I'm just going to use an example, if I know somebody who's made a threat, and you know, you don't know if you want to take them seriously or not, what would encourage folks to come out and be a little more forthcoming when they do hear something like that? Most of the time, they're afraid that person's going to get in trouble. What do you guys do if someone gives you a tip? How do you handle that situation?
Yeah, and it could be an honestly, our confidential, but we look into it, but that's what we do. We look on Facebook, we look on Twitter, we look on all the social media about the person. I run the individual, see if there's any history here at the college and our off-campus. But yeah, they're not, like, I just did one recently and couldn't find anything wrong on the person, and I just, you know, will keep an eye on it, but that's, that's all I will bring the person in. If I don't have anything to go on after my investigation, I'm not going to pull them in and just let them know I was looking into them and bring it up, they'll have no idea.
So just to be clear, if someone can come confidentially and give information without feeling that that's going to come back to them?
Right, it won't come back to the person reporting it.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'll interject real quick. Alex, I think, doesn't it state on your cast page about such things, about hearsay, overhearing things, how to handle that on your page to get it anonymously to your staff?
I'm interested in Building O and a lab format with all the garage doors open and everything. If we got the message, is the answer to go to the classroom?
Well, it changes on a yearly thing. Right now, if you could run and get out of the area, that's what their experts are saying now is to run and get out of the area. Are you talking about if you could lock down, or?
Right.
If you could lock down and play, if the active shooter's too close, you're going to have to lock down in place. If you can't lock down, you shut everything as best possible and push everything up against the door, doors, desks, chairs, you name it.
But your locking mechanism is not going to work necessarily for us.
For your slide downs?
For the labs, right, right.
Good question. I don't know how that will work with the slide downs.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's an excellent question.
Work with you on that, thank you.
Yeah, and Rex from maintenance, he's not here today, but...
Well, actually, my question is on that. The locking door system, wouldn't that make the situation in the classroom much worse for the people in there with the shooter, you know?
You could still get out. It's just so the shooter can't get into a door.
Okay.
But if you need to exit, you'll be able to exit, no problem at all.
Okay.
I'm Brad Biscara, multimedia technician here for the college, and I'm around campuses a lot. So what do we do once we hear there is an active shooter on campus? What do we do about the stragglers, let's call them, that are walking to and fro? Where should we send them? Where's the safe places to send them?
Well, with active shooter, it's fluid and it's always hard to tell, but you definitely don't want to send them into the line of fire. If you're, unfortunately, colleges are open campuses. We're not like high school, where we're all locked in. This is an open campus and you're gonna have thousands of students everywhere. The main thing first is take care of yourself. And on your way out, if you could tell others as you're leaving, "Hey, you gotta exit, you gotta leave, come this way, there's an active shooter," that way. But remember, it's, it's priority, take care of yourself first and then others second. So figure out what you're gonna do and act on it, and while you're acting on it, is spread the word as much as possible.
Hi, John and everyone, thanks for coming, this has been real helpful. Is there a possibility of practicing, you know, for the earthquake drills they do at practice at the schools? Is there some sort of training that we as faculty and students could practice, learn what to do? And I know I do them in my classroom personally, but maybe on a, would there be a drill any time that we could do?
Every time we talk about doing a drill, let's say for earthquake or fire, you'd believe it, we get a lot of, a lot of phone calls and emails, "Don't do, you're gonna disrupt our class, our time, you know, we don't have time for this." But administrators realize now that no matter what, it's gonna come, it's gonna happen, we're all gonna drill, we're all gonna practice. It might be inconvenient to some, but that's coming real soon down the pipe.
Great.
And again, feel free to email me, and I can always do your group one-on-one.
I'd love to do that, yeah, that'd be great. Good, so it will be coming down the pipe, practice a drill sometime?
Right. Like I said, administrators, we practice all the time, round table and other things, and it needs to go out there farther now.
Yeah, that'd be great.
To everybody.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name's Daphne Boatright, and I work in the nursing department here and teach psychiatric nursing. I just want to encourage everybody to listen to their gut, or listen to their hunches. I think the more sophisticated we get, the less we listen to our intuition, and I'm always encouraging everybody to be, to listen first of all, and then to be courageous enough and assertive enough to, if you can't speak up then and there to wherever you are, to speak to a friend, so then you can be united in reporting something that just is different. So be alert to any changes in sort of behavioral cues, or any, anything that you just, just doesn't settle with you, that's different in your classroom or different when you're walking across campus than before. So just listen to that gut. Just a great book, The Gift of Fear.
And even during active shooter, if it happens, you gotta listen to your gut and your instinct. Don't hesitate. What your instinct tells you, what your guts telling you, act on it, do it. Hesitation is what gets a lot of people hurt. So if you're saying, "I need to run and get out of here," do it. If you hesitate, then stay where you're at and lock down.
John, you mentioned about eliminating the red and green card system, because it was TMI, too much information for the possible perpetrators. So how does the team feel about the use of social media during this time?
By any means with social media?
By, you know, just sharing with other, "Hey, somebody's shooting, get out, do this and then that," it's now publicly shared. You think it's advantageous, or could hamper, you know, just the use of, you know, social media?
No, I think it's a positive, it's a plus. The active shooter, you know, his main goal, if I understand the question correctly, his main goal is to hurt his or her, main goal is to hurt as many people as possible very quickly, because the police are coming. They don't have time, they have just a couple minutes. So hopefully, you know, he's not checking his self, he's probably not signed up for rape to begin with, but is that how I understand your question? It might, if the active shooter might know what's going on?
And sorry, last thing. As far as ID cards for students, I've never, I haven't paid attention to them. Do they have phone numbers on them, say like the emergency numbers on those for them? Because, you know, dialing the full, you know, seven-digit during a stressful time could be hard, or of any of them, just to help direct them if they're locked down themselves under a bush, or something that they can refer to the card, because everyone carries a cellphone.
Right, yeah, the card does not have that information, but that's a good idea.
The card does have the handcuff numbers, it's the 3911. What we've done in our buildings, we've made labels and put them on every cell phone, the emergency number, 3911, and also the phone number.
Nice.
So that's on every phone.
I noticed that when I took a walk through the area, I noticed that on every phone, and that was really good idea.
John, it works. I want to mention that some of the literature we have in the back, there is an active shooter card from Homeland Security that is there for you, and it's wallet size. And there's also a crisis card that has the emergency phone numbers for Handcuff College on it, and other community resources available, so, and that's also wallet size. You can take those, put them in your wallet, and you're good to go.
And I like the emergency info on the student's card, I think that's a good idea. Yeah, fight or flight. Again, you're trusting your instinct. If it says run, you run. If you hatch down in an office somewhere or a room and you push all the furniture up against the door and the active shooter still comes in, he's there to hurt you. You have to fight. It's, you or them, and you have to fight. And, you know, I could give a two-hour presentation with the help of Dan Payne back here on what to do if somebody entered. If you're all in a classroom together, don't huddle together, spread out in the classroom, because if the active shooter does come in, it's gonna be very hard for him. If you're all huddled together, it could shoot in the vicinity and get you all. You want to stay spread apart. If they come in, then you attack from all sides, and you use fire extinguishers, you use chairs, whatever you have. And they say the active shooter can't do two things at once, so if you're distracted by throwing something at him, you know, he's gonna pause for a second, it's gonna give you a chance. You could spring with the fire extinguisher, throw it at him, bonk him on the head with it, but remember, you have to, you have to fight. So they say, you know, if you can, you run, you get out of the area. If not, you hatch down, you get ready to fight.
A question, I've thought about this recently, it might seem like a goofy idea, but what if you had, you know, in nursing, you have personal protective equipment that you can put on when you're going to be, come in contact with something that could harm you? What about some kind of personal protective shield or something in each classroom that a person could use to ram the person who's there with the gun? It seems to me that if you're gonna fight, it'd be nice to have something like that to do it with.
Yeah, it's a good point, it's definitely a possibility. I don't know how many of you know this, but we've actually had forty-six shootings on campus this year, just in 2015. And one day it might come to that, where you have to have a closet full of protective gear, one being a shield that's bulletproof, of course.
There have been companies that, after a couple of shootings, that actually sell bulletproof whiteboards and things like that they were offering.
Right, you're gonna see a lot more of that coming out, technology coming out. It's, it's pretty sad, but that's where we have to think nowadays, it could happen anywhere. You know, UCSB had it, Taft High School had one. I mean, everybody knows the college has been affected personally. Dan Payne?
I'm a retired FBI agent, and I've dealt with these situations in the past. The one thing, what did you say we're rated in the nation as?
Seventh.
Seventh. I don't know who made the, I don't know who made that judgment, but to the panel and to the school, I recommend that you develop a plan and incorporate it in new student orientation. Because in my classes, I just finished a two-day session of this, very few students had any idea of what to do. They were totally ignorant of what to do with an active shooter, and I would say that most of the students here, they're here because they want to learn what to do. And to incorporate that into freshman orientation would push us up to maybe number one.
Outstanding. Thanks, Dan. Excellent point. Might have them go through your class mandatory first thing, sign up, do it in the forum or the gym.
One of my students over there, he's a student.
He looks happy. Yeah, just remember, they're there to hurt you, and you don't want, you gotta do everything you can to protect yourself, yourself safe.
Hello, I'm a student, and I have a daughter here in the children's center, and it just came to mind, do you guys have a plan of action for the children's center? Do you guys lock down? And the last time that we did have a lockdown with the bomb threat, a lot of parents were concerned, we wanted to go get our children, but they were locked down. So what are, what are your guys' plan of actions for the children's center and getting our children?
Well, the children's center has its own separate and more strict guidelines, because they do have infants and young children there. They're set up differently than the rest of campus. They do, they can lock themselves in right now as we speak. We are doing a couple extra things for them right now. But they have their own set criteria they have to follow themselves, by law too. They have a certain amount of guidelines. We're also working on getting a camera system on campus, and part of that will include that area as well, where it's monitored by our dispatchers at all times. But they have mechanisms in place already for active shooter. And for like notifying the parents, that would be up to them, and they would have the call list and the call sheet, so they should be typing you a text or calling you on what's happening and the particulars of when you can pick up your child.
Do you guys send security to like block the whole premises, stuff like that?
Well, it'd be nice if we had the man and woman power to do that, but I will say for the childcare center, we're always in there every day. We like the little ones and we care deeply for them, and we're always patrolling the childcare center.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, can we have a presentation about an active shooter and what to do if that happens, like at another town hall meeting?
Are you in Henry Davis's class?
No.
No, okay, forget it. No, just kidding. Of course, all instructor would have to do is email me, and we could put a, do the PowerPoint and a one-on-one with you for the classroom. Maybe one day at student orientation, they'll have a whole separate section for this, like what you mentioned earlier.
Yeah, because it also matters for us students who won't have that, so yeah.
Right, definitely. Well, hope to see that at student orientation real soon.
Thank you.
At the risk of sounding like an Apple salesperson, I have an Apple Watch, and I will tell you, all alerts come to this immediately, and if so, if you don't happen to be on your phone, you still get it.
Right.
You get a little tap on your wrist, and you look at it, and it's right there.
Nice. My watch, I have a hard time.
It's hard to get one, it's actually, it's actually great to be able to get that. If you're not on your phone, you wouldn't necessarily see the alert.
Right, exactly. My phone, or my watch barely keeps time, tell me. Yeah, time to upgrade, yeah, exactly. Any other questions, Nurse Alex? Great ideas, thanks for your time there.
All right, thank you, John. Lots of great questions. Okay, so what I'm going to do is kind of talk about our threat assessment team that we have in place. It's called CAST, and it stands for Campus Assessment and Support Team. And let's see if this, yes, okay. So I'm gonna kind of go through this rather quickly for time's sake, but again, if you have questions, just go up to the podium. But after Virginia Tech, a lot of colleges developed threat assessment, behavioral assessment teams. And these teams collect referrals and help monitor students that may need extra help getting through their school. So we at the Health Center, we do a campus-wide health assessment every three years, and it's called the National College Health Assessment. And not only does it ask questions about alcohol use and other things, but it asks a lot of mental health and stress questions. So we found that in 2013, students indicated that forty-eight percent felt hopeless, almost seventy percent felt overwhelmed, forty-two percent felt overwhelming anxiety, almost nine percent had a serious consideration for suicide, and 3.4% of our students had an attempt at suicide. I want to tell you that we repeat this every three years, and our statistics stay pretty constant, okay? They also indicated that ten percent said that their depression had had a negative impact on their academics, twenty-three percent said stress had had a negative impact, and thirteen percent said that their anxiety had a negative impact on their academics. So looking at all these statistics, we see that, you know, our students here on campus have a lot to deal with, and we want to help them be successful. So for CAST, you know, our mission statement is to improve and promote campus community safety and wellness by coordinating information and developing support plans for people of concern. That is our mission. We have a variety of people that are on this team. Our VP of Student Services, Rob Parisi, or Dean of Student Services, myself, John, Deborah, Yvonne and Veronica from Academic Counseling. We have Lala and Carrie from LAP, our Learning Assistance Program. Our other mental health counselor, Delilah, is also part of the team. Daphne, who asked a great question, is also on the team, and we have Liz Phillips, who's part of our Human Resources. So we have this great team of people with their expertise all coming in and trying to help students. So our purpose is to centralize reports. So what, what they found when they did the Virginia Tech kind of report is that colleges tend to work in silos, you know? Maybe a student has a problem in the library, and the library deals with that student, and maybe that student has a problem in the classroom, or, you know, in admissions and records, and nobody really knows that there's all these issues with the student, and they're kind of being dealt with in silos. So for CAST, we, we centralize those reports so that we can get a clear picture of what is happening with that student. We assist both students and faculty with resources and referrals to hopefully alleviate or diminish the escalation of the problem. And like I said, I showed you that we had an active, we have a diverse team that does active case management of all these referrals, and then we try to assess if the situation with that student is an imminent threat for violence. So what is a threat? We kind of talked a little bit about what to do with a campus shooter, but there's a lot of other things that could occur, and a lot of steps that we could do before we get to that point. So if a student is threatening physical harm to himself or others, is engaged in menacing behavior, and you feel unsafe, that's a time to call campus police. That's a perfect time to call your campus police officer over to help you out in that situation. If a student's behavior is kind of inconsistent with what you know for that student, that's a time to talk to that student and maybe even to refer that student to the, to CAST for us to help and intervene with that student. Now, odd or annoying behavior isn't necessarily a threat, it can be an indicator of things changing, but we have a student discipline process already in place for someone who's being disruptive or, you know, impeding the classroom in that way, okay? So I want to make note that there's been a lot of talk about mental health in, in the media, especially surrounding campus shooting, but we need to remember that mental illness contributes actually very little in the overall rate of violence in the community. And statistics show that only about four percent of violence is, in the US, has contributed to persons with mental illness. People with mental illness are usually the victim of violent crimes versus being a perpetrator. People with mental illness are usually the victim of violent crimes versus being a perpetrator. So we have to remember that. Throwing alcohol and drugs into the mix actually increases violence by the rate of seven, so that, that is a greater rate there. There's also no profile that's been put out there for campus shooters, but they tend to be paranoid loners who hold a grudge and have lots of rage. They have a sense of entitlement and an average college, this may need to be revised by the amount of shootings that we've had lately, but the statistics show that the average college can expect a murder on campus every 265 years. So even though we see a lot of shootings in the media and yes, it is a problem and yes, we need to be aware and we need to deal with it, we have a safe college, we are safe, we have things in place that help us stay safe. And what's important is that we don't want people who are suffering with mental health issues to feel stigmatized, because that will be a barrier for them to seek care and help here on campus. Okay, so if you have a student of concern, there are several ways that you can refer that student. And now we're gonna see if technology is gonna be our friend. It is, okay. So you can go to the Hancock website and go under quick links here. You may not remember what is CAST, what does that mean, but you know you're having a crisis of some kind, so you go to this quick link here and you come to our page. And now you see over here, there are lots of different resources for you, other tabs that you can explore here. And our main body tells you what to do if you're having an immediate crisis, who to call. It also has the Student Health Services number here if you are interested in personal counseling. And then you see this hot button here, the referral form. It's also found here, if you can't find it, there's two places. So if you, as a faculty or staff or a student, have someone that you are concerned about, you can access this form. And again, it tells you if you are in immediate danger, this is not the place to go. Do not send a CAST referral if you're in immediate danger. Best, you need to call John, okay? All right, but if you have someone who you are concerned about, you have to enter a name. Please do not say the guy with the green shirt walking across campus. We, it'll be interesting information, but what can we do about that? Not much, so please a name. If you have an H number, that's fabulous, a phone number, fabulous. What term are you reporting in? And then you have this dropdown menu with all different kinds of things that you could initiate, you know, disruptive in class, academics. If it doesn't exist there, hit other and then you will be able to share that right here in this box. How concerned are you? Low, medium, or high? Have others shared with you that they are also concerned about the student? Yes. Who are they? Are you willing to share their names? And then you have to put in a description of what happened. What are you concerned about? What have you done? Have you done anything? Yes, I talked to the student. I referred the student to Student Health Services. I told my teacher. Whatever it is that you did, you can put in there. Do you want to remain anonymous to the student? Here's where you can indicate, yes, I don't want them to know that I sent this in. And you just hit yes. You may not remain anonymous to us however, because we may need to ask you more questions to find out what is going on. We won't share that with the student, but we need to be able to investigate, so please do give us your name, phone if you have it, or feel comfortable sharing it, and an email. Here at the bottom, there's a place where you have to agree that you say that, yeah, this is all true, and then a signature verification, then you hit submit. When you hit submit, you get a nice little pop-up window that says, "Thank you so much for your referral." If you added your email, you will get a copy of your referral and another thank you in your email, so you have it there. What happens next is that this referral gets sent to the Vice President of Student Services, where they check that name against any student discipline records that might be there. And then it goes on to myself and to John and we look and see if we know anything about the student regarding any police activity or any information that we might be able to add. And then at that point, we've determined it's a threat, it's not a threat, and then the team meets and we discuss what are the best options that we can, how we can address this student and give them the resources that they need to be successful. Okay, does anyone have questions about that portion, the referral portion, CAST, and this page? No, okay. I want to show some resources that are available to you guys here. We have the Active Shooter Handbook is here. Waiting, waiting. Or not? Yes, there it is. Okay, so if you go into the back, you have a little card, a wallet-sized card for active shooter, but here you have more information that you can access and look at, okay? Here's a Crisis Intervention Manual. This has been put together for faculty and staff and for students and it has all different kinds of information in it. See if I can get this to go bigger. So the first section of the manual has how-tos, what to do in an emergency, and the phone numbers again, but most of the manual is all about different types of crises, Cry-SI, whatever, multiple crises. So you can learn how to address somebody who may be having anxiety or being disobedient and willful in the classroom and get that information there. There's also a list of referral information either on campus or in the community, right here, available for you guys, hotlines and local support groups. And a page referring to veterans' resources. Okay. Another thing that is quite interesting, if somebody has information or is requiring more information about mental health issues, this U Life is a very great resource. It is personalized, no thank you, but thanks for asking. It is personalized, so it has our information and counseling information and contact information here. But if someone is wondering about drugs or alcohol or anxiety disorders or anything, they can get more information here about that. And different resources, there are self-evaluator questions that they can answer and, and find out more information on their own if they are interested in that. Okay. Also, I wanted to let you know that if you need or want more training, Cognito has three different training opportunities available online. It is also available right through the CAST page. You can access it 24 hours, you just go in and create a little account and you can access the three training modules. You get a certificate of completion when you're done and they deal with the at-risk student, veterans on campus, and LGBTQ students. So that's also available for you there and you can access it here at this link here. Okay, so that is where I want to end here. Here's the Cognito, I'll pull that up. Okay, so that's what I wanted to share, what CAST is all about and what we're doing and how you can access it. And I want to see if there's any other questions. Yeah. Okay. Let me repeat the question, so it goes on to this magical device here. You're asking about what do we do if we have a terrorist incident here on campus and with that, I will ask John to please give us his wisdom.
Yeah, it's pretty tough when you're getting attacked by terrorists, you know, you gotta take care of yourself and, and if you could take care of others at the same time, you know, I'm pretty, I don't have any rocket-propelled grenades to shoot back or anything like that. You're gonna be taking cover and doing the best that you can in a terrorist situation. Find cover, conceal it, hide, run, and hope that we have the tools necessary to deal with that. And hope, and hope it never comes here. I'll be running to Rob's office. Yes, all kinds of goodies in there. Take cover, hide, get best, find the biggest tree, biggest cement block out there and get underneath it, hide. If you could get out of the area, do it. Run as fast as, I know you run pretty fast, so I'd just be, I was a track star myself and I'd just be out of here. Yeah, so I'm sure you could outrun it, so you just run, run, and keep on running, like Forrest Gump if you, if you ever saw that, just keep on running. Don't look back. Your buddies on their own, just keep going.
Okay. Any other questions? I would love that. Has there ever been a female shooter?
Yes, there has been female shooters.
Okay. And how does a shooter decide his location? Is he, is it a random location? Is it, does he dislike someone in that location? Does he go to a place where there's more people?
Yeah, a lot of times it's not random, they've done their homework. Yeah, sometimes it's a grudge they have against classmates. Virginia Tech shooter, he knew, he planned out exactly what he was gonna do and who he was gonna target. And he locked them all in with chains and locks so they couldn't get out and the police could not get in. He knew exactly what he was doing. Normally it is not random. They know where they're going and who they're going after and yes, they look for the large areas, libraries, cafeterias. An active shooter wants to do the most harm possible in a very quick matter of time.
One more question. So you said if there is an active shooter, we will get the text.
Right.
And you would assume that in these classes, that at least one person will get the text. What if, for some crazy reason, no one got the text? What, what next?
Well, then, you know, simultaneously, it's coming over the classroom phone too, so you're gonna know if it's gonna be shouting over the phone in your classroom.
Thank you, great question. I think it's important, you know, to, if you see something out of the ordinary, that you say something. I know for the Oregon shooter, there was one report that somebody saw him walking on campus with a large duffel bag, so heavy that he had to put it down and that somebody thought that was odd. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we, you know, please call us if you see somebody suspicious. We're not going to run up and tackle them and, hey, when you got in there and start humping, we're gonna watch them, we're gonna, a lot of times we know the person ourself, because this is, we're here every day and we get to know students, faculty, and staff and we know, so we'll see them, okay, that's Billy Joe Jim Bob, we know who that is. Definitely call us, some suspicious, if you see somebody carrying large bags, duffel bags, definitely call us and let us check them out and we'll watch them. And, you know, that's what I do every day, I watch suspicious people, I get called on, I got called on one prior to this meeting, gentleman with two backpacks walking around, so I, I was able to identify, I knew who it was and it's like, okay. But please call us if you see anything suspicious, it, it will do nothing, it won't come back to get you, we'll check it out in a way that we do.
Okay, yes, Sal. Yes, you can, can you go to the mic? You need your exercise.
Sorry, I got in late, but this might have already been addressed, so you said something about people walking around with backpacks, John, so could we have campus policemen on bicycles or walking around? Would that deter people that, I mean, like I walked in with this backpack today, you don't even know what's in my backpack, right? And that's, same thing happens to us as classroom professors, right? Anybody can walk in your class with a backpack with anything in it.
That's right, you know, this is an open college campus.
But that, that's just rhetoric. We, we gotta do something about that. I can't get on the military base without showing somebody ID and going through a gate. So am I advocating doing something like that? If it's gonna make the school safer, yeah. They want to be safer, I want to be safer.
Yeah, just think, everybody has a backpack.
Yeah, okay, so let everybody come on the campus with a backpack and put their head in the sands, that's not the answer.
Yeah, with college campuses, they're open, as you know, and it's, it's very hard to put metal detectors or station people at every spot that students and staff come in. But yeah, from a police standpoint, it'd be great to know what's in the backpack, but unfortunately, yeah, see-through ones, yeah, might come to that one day.
Yeah, that gets us to the same, you know, we need to balance our safety, our liberties, our freedom of backpacks. I don't know what the right answer is, I mean, looking, I always go to the statistics, so how many shooters that we know had multiple backpacks or came in and used the backpack as a weapon, that would be interesting to know, I think.
Well, like the Virginia Tech shooter, he, he just had handguns and they were in his backpack, that's what he used to transport them. Some of the shooters use blankets or jackets to put over their rifle, so you could kind of look at it and go, why does that person have a blanket over something like that? And they never called in on it, no one went and checked it out, but Virginia Tech shooter, he just used handguns and is easily concealed in the backpack.
I have a question regarding emergency procedures in the aftermath of a crisis. I know that, I've heard that employees and staff are required to stay as emergency personnel, maybe in the aftermath of a situation. Are student workers required to stay as well?
No, that's just staff, full-time staff and faculty that are mandated to stay in a crisis. But it brings up a good point, remember an active shooter, if that takes place, that we, the police are gonna go af, our job is to go af, after the active shooter and you might be wounded on the floor, we're gonna have to step over you, we have to take care of the threat. After the threat has stopped, there's teams in place that now come in and take care of the wounded. So just remember that, unfortunately, you might be hurt on the floor and we're gonna have to step over you, okay? We're trying to go deal with the threat first, come back and get you, okay? Just so you know that.
John, there's some good videos on YouTube that show the response. Do, do you remember what those are?
Well, yeah, you can just YouTube shots fired on college campus and they actually have quite a few out there. Shots Fired on a College Campus is the one I recommend, it's about 20 minutes long. I have it in my office, it's what I show when I give active shooter presentations to different departments on campus and all you have to do is YouTube it, Google it, and it pops right up. Right now, I'd have to walk back to my office and get it, but...
I'm not sure we have time for that today.
Good, good point.
But it's a good suggestion, we can add it to any, our next, but you can do that at home for now.
Or here.
Any other questions? Does Lompoc have any questions? We haven't forgotten you, you're quiet. Lompoc? You can, if you choose, or you can just, whatever you would like.
Hello, sorry. This is a seriously question that I need to ask, sorry. Sorry. What if there's a bomb during a football game, and there's thousands of people, like staff versus students, coming up on Saturday? What if there's, like, someone puts a bomb in there just because they want to, or they planned it out or something? What will we do in a situation that severe and deadly?
Is this known about it before it explodes or after it explodes?
Before it explodes.
Yeah, so if it's before, and we know about anything suspicious, we'll evacuate the whole football stadium. Everybody will, will go, will leave.
How about after?
After? You're doing the same thing. You're evacuating everybody, giving them a safe location, and tending to the wounded. Every football game, we have medical and police staff there, and so we'd be tending to the wounded and also be clearing the stadium out to a safe area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Panel, do we have anything else to add before we wrap up? Deborah, Rob?
I think a lot of good points made today. One of it is just really be aware of yourself, your feelings, you know, what you sense going on. What we do is that information is, they were saying, Cast is sort of the coordinating part, because somebody will notice something on campus, they report it, and again, it's confidential, and then somebody else will talk about something, and we pull that stuff together. And one of the things that's really good about this campus is we're very proactive, even if it's just informally calling the students, say, hey, you know, what's up? You know, you're a little down in class, you're not doing your homework, you've got a change in behavior. Or a friend says, hey, I used to hang out, now I don't see them. I don't know what they're doing, where they're going, you know, make a, what's it called? Welfare check. And we do things like that. Police officers, like John says, they're on campus. Some of them are undercover, some are in uniform. They go around and notice a lot of stuff, and just, I'll walk around campus and kind of go, okay, what's up with this person? And I'll talk to John, and he goes, oh, yeah, somebody's already mentioned this, already mentioned that. So it's very active on campus. We're getting information all the time about different people, but it's because we want to help people. We want this to be a safe environment, and the job that I have is I have to get that information and decide, okay, what's the best interest for the student? I want to make sure that student is taking care of themselves, that they're safe, but I also have to balance that against the safety of the whole campus. Maybe there's a student that it's better for them not to be here at this time because of the safety of others and disrupting classrooms. So, you know, again, just be aware and don't worry about, well, I'm not sure if I tell somebody that, because you may give us just that little piece for us to contact them to make sure that they're okay. And it's not a negative thing. It's, we want to make sure everybody stays healthy. So for Alex and Deborah and everybody who put on this, you know, town hall to kind of talk about it, it's one of the proactive things that we do, and I think that's also why we're one of the safest places around. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a great point. So, yes, question.
Oh, my questions for the gentleman who was, who just spoke right now. What's your profession? What's your job here on campus or outside of this campus?
Well, yeah, my name tags down there, but I'm the Dean of Student Services, so I do student discipline, plus a whole lot of other things. But today, it's that student discipline part, so, you know, we're talking about the whole spectrum here. Do you have the active shooter? You've got disruptive people in classroom, or just whatever happens, but the whole, but we all work together. So we have mental health, counseling. So that's why I'm up here, because, like I said, student discipline, the way I do it is, I want to make sure it stays a safe campus for everybody, and I also want that student to make sure that they have the resources to be successful. So it's a real, it's a great group of people to work with, and you guys are incredibly lucky to have the Student Health Services staff that we have and the Police Department that we have. The very students that...
Oh, just one last question. I think I read like the first somewhat edition of the school newspaper here, and I think I read on it, are you like, do you have like a PhD? Aren't you like a doc, do you have like a doctorate, or was that someone else, or is that like?
Oh, that's my, yeah, I have a doctor from UC Santa Barbara. So, but I'm not, not a psychologist, not a medical doctor. I'm a paper-pushing doctor. So that's my job.
What was your major? I was just wondering.
Well...
It's confidential.
No, I've been at Hancock, I've been at Hancock for 25 years, so I have a Bachelor's in Psychology, a Master of Science in Counseling. I did part-time counseling here for a while. I got my doctor from UCSB when I turned 50, because that was, I decided education will never end, and even at that point, I really needed to go out and get more education. And so that's kind of, I have always been a student. I've always worked on a campus, and my kids went to school here at the Childcare Center, graduated from here, transferred on. So again, I've watched this college over the years, and it's an incredible institution, and it's a great place to be, and it's just incredible. So that's why I'm still here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
One more question.
Yes.
This, this one's about the automatic doors, or locks. I've noticed a good amount of these classrooms have windows. Have you taken into consideration those classes might not be important to do that? Seems like that would be a waste of money.
Yeah, it's interesting you brought that up, because I just had a meeting on that prior to coming here, and, yeah, they could easily, some of the windows are right by the locks, where the locks will be, and you could shoot out, break out the window and easily open up the door. And every time they build places here with lots of windows, the police chief always cringes because it's pretty, but an active shooter, it's, you don't want windows. So if you have any windows in your classroom, you do the best you can by pushing up filing cabinets, tables, chairs, whatever you can. You just got to do whatever you can. But windows, you definitely don't want to huddle around windows. Even if the glass breaks, that could cut you up pretty good itself. Stay away from windows if you can. If you're in a room that's full of windows, not a good idea. Trust me, yeah, we see all the windows here. For law enforcement's purposes, it's, it's not a good thing. Even for if the active shooter was in here, they, they would see us sneaking up on this side, so we couldn't do that. We'd have to be on this side, because they could look out the same windows that we are right now.
Seguing into a room that has lots of windows. I'm Marielleus Majueye, I'm the Math Center Coordinator, and we have windows. But that's not why I was going, what I was going to ask. This is primarily a question for John. Several years ago, we had a student who left a backpack for an extra long time. Some student, time students will leave something, run across the hall to the restroom, and come right back. I know how I responded, and I know what happened, but I'm kind of curious, what is the most appropriate response?
We in law enforcement treat that, we, we have to treat it all the way as if it's a bomb, something in there hurts somebody. So we evacuate, and we, we have protocol in place. We evacuate and go through the two- to three-hour process that takes to render it safe. You know, we've had suspicious packages before, evacuate the whole building, and then some after that, and the bomb squad is always about an hour or two hours out, and the bomb squad comes in with their robot, and the robot is what checks it out. Just had a suspicious suitcase left behind one night and stuffed under a chair and a table like this, and thank goodness, we were able to contact somebody that taught there the night prior, and they said, oh, that's my briefcase. This is what I have in it, and it worked out okay, but we're just two minutes out from clearing numerous buildings and setting up a perimeter. But you always have to treat it like it is a bomb, fortunately.
It wasn't treated that way, exactly.
Probably just zipped it open.
They, the officers came in, picked it up, and locked it outside very casually, and I thought, well, I could have done that, you know?
Yeah, no, you don't want to do that. I don't think about that particular incident, but I did have a chief one time who wasn't married, didn't have any kids, didn't have any family left, and the chief's like, you know what? I'll take one for the team. And, and peeked inside, and it was, it was fine. But, yeah, it's not recommended.
So how, give me an estimate, do I, how long should I wait, expecting somebody to get like?
Well, a lot of students leave their backpacks when they're out to use the restroom. You know, I'm talking if it's, you know, the person's been gone for 30 minutes, 40 minutes, that would start to concern me. I took my daughters on a train ride to San Diego not too long ago, and a gentleman did that. He left a backpack behind us, got up, and I didn't see him for an hour. So now I'm starting to get concerned, and I went to the train personnel, and they started hunting down the person. Person came back, but, you know, obviously, you give them a reasonable amount of time, but after a certain amount of time, you start thinking, okay, what's, what's the purpose of this? And you might even know the person themselves, and okay, that person's okay, but if you've never seen the person before, and they just leave a backpack and get up and don't come back, we have to treat it as the real thing.
So call the campus police, and then they decide when it's time to evacuate and when not.
And I'm not like the prior, a couple prior chiefs ago that did that, because I do have a family and kids, and I will take every precaution and evacuate them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good questions. All right, this is the last chance for questions. Any other questions? Any other comments from the panel? Lompoc? No? Okay. Well, I want to thank everybody for coming. This was great. I really appreciate your time. You know who we are. If you have further questions, feel free to email us or contact us, and I hope you guys have a great day. Thank you. Thank you.